I'm sorry, Karen, did you hear me?
Hi Karen, you're muted.
Now can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I did it like three times. I don't know what happened. Okay, let's start over. Mayor Garne?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Woodall?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Strand?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson? City Manager Knopf?
Here.
Chief of Police Connor? Finance Director Dillingham? Community Development Director Caldwell?
Here.
Water Roadways Superintendent Jensen?
Here.
Waste Water Superintendent Taylor?
Here.
And City Clerk Dunham is present. Thank you. Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Public Presentations. This is the time for persons who wish to address the council on any matter not on this agenda and over which the council has jurisdiction. As such, a dialogue with the council or staff is not intended. Items requiring council action not listed on this agenda may be placed on the next regular agenda for consideration if the council directs unless a finding is made by at least two-thirds of the council that the item came up after the agenda was posted and is of an urgency nature requiring immediate action. Please limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Are there any public? Comments? Hands raised or email in?
So I think we'll start-
Apparently there are no hands raised.
Thank you.
Rosa, can we go back to the, uh, the screen that shows the, uh, there's? So you'll, you'll need to, if you're at home, you'll need to dial star nine to raise your hand to make public comment at the meeting this evening. Again, star nine will raise your hand so that the staff can call on you. And I am not seeing anybody raising their hand, but we can go to City Clerk Dunham to see if there's been any mail-in comments.
No online comments. Thank you. I was just waiting a few more minutes to see if anyone called in.
And still, still no hands raised.
Then we will move on. Okay, we will move on to the consent calendar. We have one item on the consent calendar, but if anyone from the council staff or public wished to remove the one item. Hearing none. Is there a motion to accept the approved minutes of August 18th on the consent calendar?
Johnson moves to approve minutes of August 18th, regular meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Woodall, seconds.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please. Mayor Pro Tim Woodall?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Strand?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Garne? Yes. Motion carries five zero. Onto the staff report, please. City Manager.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Garne, members of the council. This staff report is on page 11 of your packet. So just a couple of quick updates. The city has been in the process of hiring for a community services officer for the past month and a half or so. At this point, we will be re-advertising the position and, uh, and recirculating it. So again, this is an opportunity to work in code enforcement, nuisance code enforcement in the city and then animal control and kind of miscellaneous, uh, lower level offense items in, in the city. So the re-advertising will occur over the next two weeks and then we'll, we'll start to hold interviews again. We do already have at least two applicants who would be competitive for the position. So that's good to report. And then the we will be requesting from the council just to individual letters of support for the ATP Trail Project, the River Access Project that the council approved for the city to submit a grant application for. We'll need those letters in by the middle of next week. And so we've already gotten a pretty good response from people who are kind of doing a roundup on securing further letters that we add to the grant application packet. So I will be sending an email out to the council here shortly, probably tomorrow. Giving you a web address for a petition to sign. And then also we'll be doing every door direct mailer advertising the project to the general public in Riedel. And then, uh, and then collecting all of those signatures by the middle of next week. So with that, I'll return it back to the council and see if there's any other questions or comments to staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so we will go down. I'll start with Mayor Pro Tim Woodall. Do you have any questions? Any staffing?
Yes.
Go for it.
Um, okay. Um, with Public Works Waste Water. Was Derek on?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, Derek, I just had a question for you. On one of the first items you have that you worked on, it says "Operation Staff Completed for First Round of Bench Testing for Chloramines." Have we gotten the, the results from those tests?
Yeah. So a part of the sanitary sewer evaluation we're working on with GHD. One of the issues we're working on is the disinfection byproduct. And, uh, yes, what we did in a clip, you know, Cliff noted is, uh, we just ran some sample effluent with a different type of disinfection strategy by adding ammonia to chlorine. And so far, um, yeah, it did. We did have some positive results. We're going to be doing a couple of other things to kind of see if it's going to be viable. I got a phone call with Jamal from GHD, who is their disinfection specialist, either later this week or early next week, to see if we can do a full-scale run to the irrigation field and then do some more testing to see if it's going to be viable for year-round disinfection method. But yes, we're, we're getting some positive results.
Okay. That'd save us quite a bit of money if it works, right?
Yeah, a lot of money.
Okay. Well, thank you for doing that. Um, also for the Public Works people that have been watering the trees on the South Gateway. Thank you because two of the trees that looked like they were gone now have leaves on them, just in time for them to lose their leaves. But thank you for doing that. And then I have a question, well, not a question. Chief, I want to thank you for moving on that six eleven Wildwood. Um, the people are really happy with how things are going. And, um, just, this is just a question out of curiosity. I know they moved one trailer out. That isn't by any chance the trailer that they put up over on the old Eel River? Mills property, is it?
So, uh, Councilmember- I'm not sure that Chief Connor was able to make it on the call this evening. So he should be on the next, he should be on the next call.
Oh, no problem. No problem. Um, I, I just appreciate the work he did on, on that this, this time. And that was, that was all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. And, um, um, Mayor Pro Tim Woodall, are we good then with the six eleven issue?
Oh, um, yes, I'm happy with it. And the people that I talked to, the people above them, and they're very happy with what's going on also.
Thank you very much for that report. Uh, Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Garne. No questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilson?
Uh, just, just a couple of minor questions was on the discussion with Agricultural Commissioner on possible hemp. Is that a major operation or a major change to put him up on the Densmore Park toe?
Um, so it would be Mr. Cortezar's property up there. Um, you know, my understanding is it's somewhere in the area of 10,000 square feet of industrial hemp that he thinks he can get in before the end of the season, but the likelihood of that happening is, is pretty low at this point. But he is looking into doing a, uh, an industrial hemp operation up there.
All right. Thank you. I, I too is pleased to see the law enforcement and the nuisance committee moving forward on six eleven Wildwood. That's, that's encouraging to see that we're making some progress. And I think it's going to help city as well. I noticed they fixed the streak too where they had, somebody had painted on it. And then the other question was the, on Riedel Holdings. What is, what was going on with Riedel Holdings? Are they going to move forward? I'm not sure who answers that question.
That might be, uh, Kevin.
Councilmember Wilson, Kevin Caldwell, Community Development Director. The Planning Commission held a meeting on August 25th to approve a modified subdivision layout of the property. I understand the property is in escrow. Um, and the new buyer is aware of the conditions of approval. They are hoping to bond those conditions of approval so they could actually record the map and then complete the sale. Um, it's our understanding that Riedel Holdings is going to keep the remainder parcel. That is the parcel with the stockpiled soil that needs to be transported down to a Southern California landfill. Um, but that is the latest on Riedel Holding.
So the, the building that they're looking to transfer sale on is the one that's being constructed?
No, Riedel Holdings is the 15 acre parcel just north of the old planer building, Humboldt 454, the indoor cultivation facility right now. It is on the east, yeah, I think you understand where it is.
Okay, I got it. That was my, my mistake. Thank you for covering-
No problem.
Uh, those were, that's all the questions I had.
Thank you. Councilmember Strong?
Yeah, I was just wondering, um, City Manager, Mayor, did you guys get together with Danco or what's happening on that?
Um, so I did send a follow-up email to their representative, to Danco's representative. She assured me that they are working on it, but we have not received a specific date and time for a meeting.
Well, I would like to continue to pursue the letter to the state then. Um, suggesting all the issues that we've had with Danco on this project because again, they're dropping the ball. And I also spoke with the fire department and asked them to give us a list of the fire calls that they're making down there. Have you seen that list? City Manager?
I have not.
Okay. So that should be coming and we may be able to add that to the letter also. But I strongly feel we need to do this follow-up on Danco.
Okay. Um, is that, how does that work, City Manager? Is that an agenda item?
Uh, yeah. So we would, uh, we can, uh, agendize something for the, for the next meeting.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. And I think my questions were answered by questions that were already asked. So we're all good. And we will now move on to, oh, are there any public? Comments? Anyone raise their hand? Anyone who wants to speak to anything in the staff report?
Currently, there are no hands raised.
Thank you.
And no emails received.
Thank you both. Okay, then we will move on to ordinances, special resolutions, public hearings. Page 17, Approve Resolution 1462-2020, Adopting the Mitigated Negative Declaration for the Riedel Water Infrastructure Improvement Project and Adopting the Mitigation Monitoring and Reporting Program. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Garne and members of the council. This item begins on page 17 of your packet, rather lengthy and prizes most of, uh, of this week's agenda packet volume. So, uh, the council last received an update on this project back on July 21st by GHD. And, and as we all know, we've been working on this project for, for quite some time now. Um, and we do have Andrea Hilton on the line here to help walk us through the latest in this, in this project, which is the environmental process for, uh, for for the city. So Andrea hopefully is, uh, unmuted and we are ready to, ready to begin.
Welcome, Andrea. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. So hi, everyone. I'm Andrea Hilton with GHD. I would like to note, I'm also joined this evening by Rebecca Crow, who's our chief technical expert on this project. Um, I'm going to just kind of walk you through some of the updates from the last time we discussed the project and make sure all the questions that you or the public might have are addressed before you consider voting to adopt and approve the project. So the SEQA document for the water improvement project was circulated to the public for the 30-day period, and there were two comments received, both from state agencies, Caltrans and the State Lands Commission. We, uh, this, the nature of the comments of the State Lands Commission was essentially to remind the city that should any sensitive cultural resources be discovered, um, within the footprint of their jurisdiction, which is essentially the Eel River itself, that they also be notified. And they found one small typo. Um, and so we've prepared a response to the State Lands Commission, adding in that requested language. It's not a problem. And, um, that can be returned to the State Lands Commission and included in the final SEQA ISM ID for this project. Caltrans, recall that currently the water pipe that connects the city, both sides of the river is attached to the bridge. And one of the goals of this, the US 101 Bridge, and one of the goals of this project is to upgrade that so it's more seismically resilient. And we've considered three scenarios, two of which directionally drill under the Eel River, and the third scenario, which would again essentially attach it to the bridge itself, the 101 Bridge. Um, and so the nature of the Caltrans comments was to remind us that any work we do within their right of way requires us to comply with the plethora of their rules and regulations for technical standards, et cetera, et cetera. And so, you know, the nature of our response again is like, yes, we will work with you to, um, design the project so that you are happy, Caltrans, and we're following your, the plethora of your technical standards. And that was it for comments received. And so what we have prepared for you in your packets is a, uh, response to comments, which essentially goes through each of these comments that were received. They're numbered from each agency and the response there too. There were no comments that were, you know, disagreeable or would cause a problem. Um, and then you also have the mitigation monitoring reporting program, which is the summary of all the mitigation measures that the city would essentially be responsible to implement, you know, before, after, and during construction to ensure there were no significant impacts to the environment. And then you also have before you the, um, resolution and findings of the project, which is a summary of the project and, um, simple findings. And that's what you essentially would be considering in your resolution to, to adopt and approve the project. If you adopt and approve the project, a notice of determination would be filed with the Humboldt County Clerk Recorder later this week. Any, any questions? Regarding any of that?
Thank you, Andrea. Counsel, Council Mayor Pro Tim Woodall? Councilmember Strong?
Yeah, I have some questions. So this is just for the mitigated mitigation, right? I mean, we're not deciding on a, which one of these three we're going to be doing.
That's correct. Those technical decisions can still happen in the future. This essentially makes all three of those scenarios compliant with SEQA. So all three scenarios have been evaluated, um, you know, by the SEQA process and, and included in the public notice. Um, and you can sort that out later.
And so on page 35 of the letter sent by the State Lands Commission, it talks about leasing. That's all addressed later.
Yeah. So if you, if the city were to pursue scenario one or scenario two, where you would directionally drill under the Eel River, the State Lands Commission claims jurisdiction to the underground portion of that. Um, and the city would be required to apply to the State Lands Commission for a lease to do that.
Okay.
Which would occur at a future date.
Okay. Thank you so much. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Are you good, Sue?
Yes, thank you.
Uh-huh. Uh, Councilmember Wilson?
I think Councilmember Strand asked the questions I was curious about as well, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Garne. Uh, I was wondering how the design is coming and when we might have a biddable package. Is there a timeline for that?
This is Rebecca. Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Excellent. Um, so we reviewed the 65% design with Kyle and Randy in detail last week. Randy's following up on a couple of items and then we're going to meet with him again. And so we should be finishing off, taking that information and getting the 95% done here in, you know, in the next month, month and a half or so.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Rebecca. Um, I'll go back to Julie one more time. Mayor Pro Tim?
Yes. Yes, I unmuted myself finally. No, I have no questions. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Um, well, um, so we need, I have no questions, a motion to approve Resolution 1462-2020.
I move to approve. Oh.
Second by Johnson.
So we have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Woodall and a second by Councilmember Johnson.
And actually, Mayor Garne, before we vote, uh, we might just want to verify that we have no public comment.
Thank you very much. It just occurred to me too.
Uh, so Rosa, Rosa, can you place the the placard back up on the screen real quick? Um, so again, we have a 1-800 number, 1-888-475-4499 to call in. Our meeting ID number, which is the same for every meeting of the Riedel City Council, is 987-154-0944. Um, and when you call in, if you want to speak, to raise your hand, you dial star nine. So if anybody interested in providing comment for this particular item, please dial star nine now. And that allows Rosa, our operator, to identify you and make sure that we hear what you are saying. So again, dial star nine to raise your hand. If you're on a, on a computer or a laptop, there's a feature to, uh, to raise your hand as well. But at this point in time, I am not seeing any hands raised, Mayor Garne.
Thank you, um, City Manager, and thank you for catching that for me. I appreciate it. So that being said, is there? Wait a few more seconds.
No online comments either.
Okay, thank you. So we'll count to 10.
Yeah, and then we just want to do the vote here to clear out this item.
Right. I was just giving a few more seconds. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please. Mayor Pro Tim Woodall?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Strand?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson? Mayor Garne? Yes. Motion carries five zero to approve Resolution 1462-2020, adopting the mitigated negative declaration for the Riedel Water Infrastructure Improvement Project and adopting the mitigation monitoring and reporting programs. Now we will move on to item two. Adopt the ordinance number 381-2020, approving text amendment Title VIII, Health and Safety, Chapter 8.10, nuisances of the Riedel Municipal Code. City Manager or, uh, City Development, Community Development Director.
Thank you, Mayor Garne, members of the council. This item starts on page 75 of your packet. And I'll give you just a second to take a look if it gets there. Um, I hope you've all had a chance to read it. Um, really what it does, again, amends our nuisance regulations, and in this case, regarding the use of generators to support, um, basically illegal occupation of travel trailers. And I think a lot of this was due in part to six eleven Wildwood Avenue, which I'm glad to hear is being resolved. Um, anyway, as we go through this, as the council knows and the nuisance committee heard, uh, there were some neighbors that had concerns about the use of generators all throughout the day and at the evening, um, supporting this illegal occupancy of these travel trailers. We felt that this was an urgency item that should be brought to your council to adopt regulations regarding the use of generators. And if you look at page 76, these regulations not only apply to the use of travel trailers, it also is in response to PG&E's Public Safety Power Shut-Off, the PSPS. Um, the fact when I was writing the staff report last week, we were in a red flag warning and there was a chance the PG&E may have to shut down the grid in our area. Um, what we're looking at is basically in regards to the generator, um, amending the definitions, and they're basically in the middle of the page there. 8.10.02022, we've got a definition of prolonged power outage. And that means a power outage that is no less than four hours in duration. Um, then we go into basically the use of generators themselves. It says, "The use of generators except during prolonged power outages are subject to the following conditions. Generators for residential uses shall comply with the setback standards for the underlying zone district. Be placed in an area that is reasonably practical for the homeowner that is least disruptive to the neighbors. Generators supporting residential uses shall not be operated during the hours of 9:00 to 7:00 a.m." Basically, it's 9:00 p.m. at night to 7:00 a.m. in the morning, except for as required for bona fide health and medical needs. Those people that are on CPAC machines or those folks who need to keep their medicine refrigerated. Subsection B, during a prolonged power outage period, generators for commercial uses may be operational 24 hours a day, but should be shut off when not critically needed to minimize the nuisance or the disturbance of the neighbors. Um, we talked at the nuisance committee about, uh, the use of generators and they were very supportive of it. We ran- We ran this by the city attorney, and we felt that these generators do affect the public health and general welfare of the community, and therefore qualified as an urgency ordinance. The other item that your council is considering tonight is in regards to the recent proliferation of graffiti in town. As I'm sure most of the council members have seen, there has been a significant amount of graffiti the last three or four weeks in town. Graffiti is not actually identified in our nuisance regulations. Of course, it is considered visual blight. We felt this to be a cleanup to make sure that there was no question that graffiti qualifies as visual blight. Again, we ran this by the city attorney, and he felt comfortable that we can include this as well as an urgency ordinance. As such, we've put the draft ordinance together in your packet, and that draft ordinance actually starts on page seventy-eight of your packet and is ordinance number three eighty-one dash twenty twenty. Therefore, we recommend that your council open up the public hearing, deliberate among yourselves, take any public comment or written public comment as identified by the city clerk, and then we recommend that you adopt the urgency ordinance. Again, that's ordinance number three eighty-one dash two zero dash two zero with a four-fifths vote. A four-fifths vote is required for all urgency ordinances. If you have any questions, members of the council, members of the public, I'd be more than happy to answer them if I can.
Thank you, community development director Caldwell. We'll go back to the council. Councilmember Strong?
Kevin, so on page seventy-six, where you read a listing, the, the use of the generators, and then you have eight A. So is that only during prolonged power outage, or that's anytime? It looks like to me that's an anytime statement on A, where B would be just during the power outage.
It's actually just during prolonged power outages, except during prolonged power outage is subject to the following conditions.
But eight, except, so is that right?
I'm sorry I missed that. I apologize.
So eight, ten point oh three oh, the use of generators except during prolonged power outage? So you're saying it's A to use generators, if it's not a power outage, anytime between seven and nine during the daytime?
No, no, the intent there and the intent there and it may, the wording may be a little, a little, a little loose. But the intent there is that you can only use these generators during prolonged power outages. You cannot use a generator unless there is a prolonged power outage.
Okay, so I think that word except, which probably is not in the real ordinance, so.
You know what? I, I will check it, and I will cert, and I will run it by the city attorney to make sure that language is solid.
Great. Thank you so much, Kevin. I appreciate it. I appreciate you getting right on this, too. Thank you.
You.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Garance. We seldom have a urgency ordinance come before us, and by my memory, not only the, if necessary to pass it, but this goes into effect immediately, that and there is no second reading of the ordinance. So tonight, final night, and it goes into effect tomorrow. Is that correct?
You are correct, Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilson?
Just one question on clarification on generators. Are the, are the generators that are basically permanently installed, say they're hooked up to natural gas, do they have the same restrictions applied to them as the, I guess we're, we're thinking of like a gas-powered Honda?
Yes, yes, they do. And actually, we've actually had, in the last two or three years, we've probably had at least two, maybe three of those installed. They typically have, oh, it's, it's about a minute delay before they, they kick on during these power outages. Now, that would be, could be problematic because we do have the four hours or more, but we can certainly notify, but there are just so few of them, these property owners. In fact, I know that one of them actually has to do with medical needs. But I know there's just two of them for sure that I know off the top of my head, and I will reach out to them directly and let them know of the new regulation.
Because there's no, there's no requirement like our, or I guess, regulation regarding the level of sound decibels that come out of it, where some of those that are-
There is, yeah. Our noise ordinance, or excuse me, our noise element of the general plan does have sixty decibels at the property line. These generators that are installed on a permanent basis, actually within housings, and those housings attenuate the noise level theoretically, just outside the box, right at six decibels. These manufacturers are cognizant of these noise requirements that local jurisdictions have. So if it's a fairly new generator, they have attenuation built into their cabinets to keep those noise levels maintained at sixty or less.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tim Woodall?
Yes, I, off the question I was interested in, I just wanted to make sure that I answered. Generators can't be used except when there's an emergency. I mean, my neighbor couldn't say at seven o'clock in the morning, turn on his generator and run it until nine o'clock if there wasn't an emergency.
Correct. That is the intent.
Oh, great. Yeah, okay, I just didn't understand that. Thank you.
Thank you. And I guess the only question I, thank you all for like getting right on to this. I mean, it's really awesome that you, you've gotten on to it so quickly. Mike, my question is, let's say a person's house goes out of power that isn't citywide, so no one else knows, you know, or only a couple people and a whatever's on that line goes out. So if you're, you're in the middle of something, you want to get something done, is that then not allowed because there's no way that you can prove it's going to be longer than four hours? How's that work?
Yeah, the language right now is four hours, so it would have to be out four hours if you can go out and start your generator, you know? And that's certainly an item that's up, up to discussion of the council. Should the council want to reduce the recommended four hours to something less than four hours? That is certainly your prerogative.
And so if, let's say, I don't know why I'm being a pain right now. So let's say your power goes out and you call City Hall and you say, City Hall, my power is out, it's not my fault, it's PG&E, I'm in the middle of doing something, can you get like permission? Like, you, you know, like if you're literally in the middle of doing some document or some, something that you need actual power for, is that something that you can like prove?
There, there is no language that would provide for an exception. Under the current language, you would have to wait four hours before you could start your generator up and, and get back on to whatever you were working, that document or something.
Okay, thank you. I'll just let that go. Are there any public questions or hands raised, comments, emails?
There are no hands raised at the moment.
No emails received.
Thank you, then. Is there a motion for the acceptance of approval of, or approving the first reading, the first, well, this only reading, to adopt urgency ordinance number three eight one dash twenty twenty, approving the text amendment Title Eight, Health and Safety, Chapter eight point one zero, nuisances of the Riedel Municipal Code? And before I, before I actually put that out there, Kyle, city manager, I would ask, are we supposed to make like an exception for, like Kevin said, he was going to go back and check on something? How's that work?
I think with direction to the, for the staff to work with the city attorney to clarify the language as-
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Okay, so is there a-
I, I would like to make that motion, but I want to take the four hours out.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
Well, I have a question. If we take it out and, and we change it tonight, we can still pass it as an emergency? Or because now it's not what it read in the agenda?
No, you, you can still pass it as urgency ordinance. Let's say that your council decided that two hours was the prolonged power outage. It would still be allowed as an urgency ordinance. We don't consider that a significant change, and this is actually one of the items that could be a talking point.
Okay. Um, I, I could, I could agree with Sue on that.
And I-
Councilmember Strong? Do, do you have a, a time period that you are recommending?
No, I don't think we should put a timeframe on it. I think we should just leave it without the timeframe.
Basically, just a power outage, then?
I, I'm, I'm changing my mind. I think two hours would be good. I would go with two hours. But I'd like to hear, I'd like to hear somebody else's opinion, too.
I was, I don't, I'm not sure about the urgency of a timeframe. I guess convince me on that if we're having an outage. The intent of this is so that we don't have, if my understanding is, isn't, isn't so much a power outage issue, is it's more of trying to correct the nuisance issue where people are creating a nuisance by running generators long periods of time, weird hours? Is that correct?
That is correct. The reason that this was brought to your council was because of the situation of six eleven Wildwood, and it certainly was not related to power outage. It was related to the supporting of basically travel trailers used as residence in violation of city code.
I, I, I see, I don't really see the need to have a, a timeframe to wait, particularly if people are going to move. What I expect to, to see more people going to this transfer switch station, I know the electrician people that I know had an awful big order for putting in transfer switches with a Generac type automatic generator. So if there's a, like you say, it's a minute or a thirty-second or a brief period of time, those generators automatically start, and then somebody would be, they'd have to go out and deal with it, other than they would be in, in compliance because their generator automatically started.
Oh, good point.
They do it.
You are correct.
They automatically start, and then when power restores, they give it a little bit of time to, to see the power stable, and then it switches back, and it-
You are correct. I actually have a family member who recently installed one of these, and it comes on in twenty seconds, and then it starts once a week, and it runs for thirty seconds, just to make sure it's still working correctly. I have no objection or no concerns at this point regarding a timeframe identified. I think the use or the intent here again was to focus on really illegal occupancy of travel trailers and then supporting that occupancy with these residential generators, which became a nuisance, as all the council member knows.
I forgot about the automatic testing.
Thank you.
So did Sue make a motion?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
She made a motion to remove the four hour limit.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to, I'm sorry, councilmember Johnson, did you want to say anything with regard to what was discussed after the motion was made?
Thank you, Mayor Garance. Today I had a couple hours to just fiddle around, and I happened to be reading in our council member's handbook of Doctor, Judge Rosenberg's Rules of Order. And what we're doing now certainly fits with that, motions in general, and then, you know, amended motions and whatnot. If, if you haven't read this recently, I'd invite your attention to it. That's my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, then, did I call for public, public comment? Because now we've kind of gotten off the train, off the rail, I mean. Is there any public comment?
There are still no hands raised.
Thank you.
No emails received.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Woodall?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Strand?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Garance?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. Now to the introduction, first reading by title only of ordinance number three eight two two zero two zero, amending existing sign regulations. Section seventeen point three zero point three zero zero, table seven dash one of the Riedel Municipal Code. Page eighty-six.
Thank you, Mayor Garance. I'm sorry. Thank you, Mayor Garance, members of the council. This was recently brought to staff's attention as part of the application for element seven when they sent their sign details in for review. We actually discovered that on-building signs, those signs that are mounted onto the building, are limited to one per business. We, as the council knows, adopted a comprehensive overview of the sign regulations, I think in the middle of twenty eighteen. This was an oversight on my part. I should have thought this through a little more clearly. And where this comes into play typically would be cornered lots, where you've got visibility of a side of a building. For example, the former Green Bean, soon to become Element Seven Building, E and J Liquors. It also will come into play, hopefully, when the Todd property is developed along Davis Street and Highway one oh one, as probably member, many of the council members probably are aware of. The city of Petaluma built a shopping center, oh, I don't know, probably within the last five years, just before you get, I believe, it's the Washington Turnoff. And the shopping center, for the most part, backs up the Highway one oh one. And all of those businesses, or at least most of those businesses, have signage on the back of the building, letting those travelers know on Highway one oh one that their businesses are just off there. And of course, they've got signage on the front of the building, too. This is also true with the Friedman Building Supply Store in Petaluma. They have a sign on the backside telling them that's the Friedman's Hardware Store business, and then, of course, a sign on the front side as well. Element seven was willing to go through a variance process. Variances are very difficult to recommend approval. We, I thought, since this should have probably been considered in the first place, it would be easier to amend the regulations to allow up to three on-building signs per business. We would not, we are not recommending we modify the maximum allowable area, in this case, in the town center and neighborhood center zone, that is one hundred square feet. And on page eighty-seven of your packet, you'll see table seven dash one. And again, another oversight that I just discovered this evening, is that we are recommending the community commercial and industrial commercial zones also be allowed to have three of two, three on-building signs per business. And again, we are not recommending that we increase the maximum area, just the location of those signs, if they wanted to put one on the front and one on each side, for example, if they had open visibility from those sides. With all finding amendments of chapter seventeen, which are the zoning regulations, we have to find that the proposed amendment is in the public interest. We certainly believe the proposed amendment is in the public interest. And by the way, we need to reach out to the Riedel Chamber of Commerce, and they are supportive of the amendment. Of course, in making that public interest finding, the success of business, of course, depends on signage and visibility, and we certainly hope- And we certainly hope that is the case here. That'll help businesses be more successful in the city of Riedel. We also have to make sure or find that the proposed amendment is consistent with the general plan. Um, the general plan does have a number of policies that, uh, really call for, uh, orderly commercial development, um, promote economic development. And then the third finding is that the process, or the amendment has been processed in accordance with California Environmental Quality Act. Um, as we do many times, we rely on Section fifteen oh six one B three of the SECA guidelines. It basically says if we believe that there can be or will not be any significant environmental effects of the proposed project, we can utilize, uh, this category of exemption or statutory exemption. And we are doing that in this case as well. Therefore, staff recommends that you open the public hearing, discuss it among yourselves, hear any public comment that may be coming in. And then basically approve the first reading and continue the second reading and approval and adoption at your next meeting, which is scheduled for September fifteenth, 2020. And with that, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you, Kevin. Um, so I, I have a question about the illumination. The, the element seven signs are illuminated, yes? They all look like-
Um, at least, at least two of them I know are. I would have to flip through the sign details right now to find out if that third one is on the side. And it looks like it is.
So how does, is there like a, a lumen, uh, a number that prevents glare into someone's residence?
No, we, we don't have a lumen or a foot candle threshold. Um, the finding is basically no glare onto residential properties. Um, and so we would, of course, that would actually be subject to after the thing is installed. If we determine that it's way too bright at the evening time, we would ask them to put in lower wattage bulbs, uh, so it wasn't as bright, not cause glare into the residential properties.
And that's-
But we do not have a threshold that identifies foot candles or lumens.
Okay, would that then be though enforceable? The, the reason I ask, I like to think of the variance process, thinking that, you know, because now everyone, you know, could have signs and they could be illuminated and, um-
Yeah, it's, it's the same standard we have for, um, parking lot lighting, for example, that the rays cannot extend beyond the boundaries of your, your property that you're trying to illuminate. And it is enforceable. It's a violation, um, of the municipal code. And violations actually, um, are considered misdemeanors and fines of up to a thousand dollars a day. Um, most people, if it is a concern, I would think, would work with the city in reducing that potential nuisance to the neighbors. If not, um, we would have to take them, unlike anybody else, to the court enforcement process. Um, I'm hoping, and we haven't had to go there in my eight years, I guess, since it's been, since I've been at the city, um, to enforcing, uh, to enforce elimination standards.
Awesome. Thank you, Kevin. Um, Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Garance. Uh, Kevin, I, I don't really have a whole lot of problem with, uh, you know, three signs on, uh, a building like Green Bean or a corner lot or a corner building, uh, in town center. But I, I have a question, uh, regarding, uh, signage that, let's say, is going to be out in the Riedel, uh, Business Park. Um, and considering, you know, Glen White's big building out there, uh, which abuts Highway 101, but it's in a, I guess, a industrial commercial zone. Uh, they would, according to my reading, would have one sign per project entrance. Uh, I guess you could enter from two different ways. So they would be allowed to have two signs. Is, is my understanding of this correct?
You, as far as the existing regulations?
Well, a- according to the table on page eighty-seven.
Yeah, yeah, right now they would be allowed to have, well, under the staff's recommendation, they would be allowed instead of one up to three, they would be allowed to have one freestanding sign. And then the integrated development is more like a, uh, more like a shopping mall. For example, the Strong's Creek Plaza sign there on Fortuna, where they have, uh, most of the tenants on that one sign. Um, but they would be allowed, Glen White's project, for example, um, they would be allowed to have three on building signs, not exceeding a hundred and twenty-five square feet in aggregate. And then one freestanding sign, not exceeding a hundred and fifty square feet in aggregate.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilson?
Uh, with, uh, with, with President.
I'm sorry?
I think I'm good.
Councilmember Strong?
So yeah, my only concern also is the illumination of the signs. And, um, especially so on Green Bean, there are residences right across the street, um, behind the building there and to the right of it as you're looking at the front. Um, but Riedel is not a big city and I feel like it, this should be a variant and it should be brought, uh, at each, each time. Just because then when you're looking at Davis 101, it would probably be all right to have illuminated signs down there from the freeway. But again, it would be specific. So, yeah, I, I am, I am against the illuminated signs on the side of the buildings in town center. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Woodall?
Um, I'm okay with it since the square footage is staying the same. I would have hated seeing three signs, you know, three big signs. But since they'll have to limit it to that certain square footage. Um, I'm all right with the lighting as far as what Kyle said, where, not Kyle, Kevin said that it has to stay within the boundaries of the business or within the lot. I can, that one's good. Um, and the Planning Commission, I like, they, um, reviewed it and recommended the amending, um, amending this at this meeting. So I'm good with it.
Thank you. Um, um, are, are there any public comments?
There are no hands raised.
No email comments.
Thank you. Um, so I will ask for a motion. I would say, I, I think three signs is excessive, but there you have it. Um, is there a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance or approve the ordinance and move it on to the second reading?
Councilmember-
I shall move. Oh, go ahead.
Uh, Councilmember Johnson moves for acceptance of the first reading of ordinance 382-2020.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Councilman, Councilman Woodall, Councilman Woodall, second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Woodall?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stran?
No.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Garance?
Yes. Motion carries four one. Councilmember Strong opposing. That brings us to-
Thank you.
Council reports. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
I will start at the one and, uh, Councilmember Wilson, any council reports?
Well, the only thing that I have is that, uh, if you watch the news tonight or read, uh, Lost Coast outpost, uh, HWMA is opening up for CRV redemption, uh, starting as of this morning. And also the, um, recology and home sanitation are, uh, applying for, uh, decertification as CRV redemption centers. And when I talked to Director Duffy about that, uh, she told me that the, the reason for that is it's not profitable for, uh, recology or home sanitation to, to, to do the CRV. Uh, Humboldt Waste Management subsidizes their CRD and recycling by about a million dollars a year through solid waste um, disposal that they do at their facility. That in turn does not affect, uh, the Riedel residents on that subsidizing, to my knowledge. But anyway, for those of you that have bags of aluminum cans and bottles, there's certain restrictions about their opening up, um, Tuesday through Saturday.
Is that on Hawthorne? The one on Hawthorne?
Hawthorne and Union.
Thank you. Councilmember Strong?
Yeah, so we had our, our HCOG meeting, which was, went well. And, um, there's not, I don't really have anything to report from that. Things are moving along on 101 and on Last Chance Grade. And, um, we, they did shoot down our FAU, so we will still be getting less than the bigger cities. Uh, but, uh, we tried. That's all we could do in that. And, um, I think that's it. Also, we did receive the letters on the nuisance committee. We had our nuisance committee meeting and as you can hear from tonight's results, that, um, our chief of police is on top of the situation at 611 Pacific. We did get the letters from Barry Knight and Siffrid, Siffrid. And, uh, we'll see to it that those are also at the next meeting. So we thank you for your input of, uh, everything that's happening out there. And we appreciate you taking the time to write us a letter. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Garance. Uh, traffic committee met a couple weeks ago and, uh, some research needs to be done, uh, before our next meeting, which is scheduled in about another two weeks. So it looks like we'll be getting back to, uh, somewhat of a more regular schedule for traffic meetings. That's it, Mayor Garance.
Thank you. And, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Woodall?
Um, yes, I recovered the RIDEC meeting for Councilman Johnson. Um, they did a program on, um, project equity. The co-founder and the North Coast Small Business Development Center did one on succession planning and employee ownership, talking about how you plan for your businesses to move on once you decide to let go. Um, there was also, um, they discussed the lease renewal on their building. They may not need to have used quite as many rooms. So, um, they didn't make, didn't make any decisions, but they were talking about what they wanted to do. And also, um, RIDEC was invited to apply to the EDA for a non-competitive, little over five million dollar grant. The grant will provide four hundred and sixty-three thousand in administrative support with the balance being available for lending. We talked about that. And the only other question I had is, um, do we have any plans for the study, for the economic, uh, study session for the economic development?
Um, we're still working on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And, um, I have nothing to report. I think I wanted to thank, um, Councilmember Strong and Mayor Pro Tim Woodall for your work on the, uh, nuisance committee and appreciate, um, the chief and Kyle and Kevin staff in general for all of your work to help resolve this. It was a pretty unfortunate situation. So, um, I think everyone's glad that it's being dealt with. So thank you all for that. And, um, that's all. So is there a motion to say good night?
Motion to adjourn by Johnson.
Motion to accept. Is there a second?
Second.
Second it? We have a motion and a second? Good night, everyone. Have a good week.
Good night.
Thank you.